The Yurie was closed and then it redirected to Marshall. Marshall was closed. And then we redirected to Common and I finally got here. So, I apologize for being a few minutes late. But we are going to call to order and I think we're-
Here.
Councilman Jefkins.
President.
Councilman Corbin.
Here.
Councilwoman Flurry.
Here.
Councilwoman Lynch, here. Councilman Gold.
Here. Just as a matter of housekeeping, are the mics working right? Yeah, okay, good. Great, all right. Tomorrow, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of Tuesday, February 24th, and a special meeting Tuesday, so it was also Tuesday, February 24th. At this point, does any council member have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished guests? Seeing none, Mayor Tyler, do you have any awards, recognitions, distinguished guests, or communications relative to city business?
I just have one announcement. We will be doing an update and progress report tomorrow with the Shreveport Regional Airport and the Downtown Airport by Bill Cootsey. And we have announcements for tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, and then, let's see. So, for tomorrow, we will have property standards available if anybody has any issues. The revenue collection, I believe we got a preliminary sales and use tax report already. Everybody should have received that electronically, as well as the surety bond forfeiture report. So, if anyone has questions about those, let us know. But you should have received those electronically. There's no public hearing tomorrow, so let's move on to adding items to the agenda. Mr. Crawford, is there any legislation to be added tomorrow?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I believe there's one item to be added to the agenda for today, and it's a motion to reconsider PSD 140017, 2407 Portland Avenue, property owned by Ms. Brenda Wilson.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Wilson is here and I spoke with the Director of Property Standards and I also spoke to our city attorney. The issue that we have here is that this property was scheduled for, to be demolished, and Ms. Wilson has a buyer. She's within the appeal timeframe as it relates to appeal to the district courts. She wants to transfer the property to another owner, and I was, I'm trying to understand, I want to allow her the opportunity, because the gentleman who's here who's going to purchase the property has agreed and gave me a letter of intent that he will act expeditiously in getting the property rehabbed. So, I don't want her to go through the process of getting, of doing anything violating our, not being timely in responding to the inclement weather also contributed to this. But before I make the motion to reconsider, I would like either the city attorney or the deputy city attorney to give me their opinion on what we are here. Are you familiar with it, Ms. Glass?
Yes, Mr. Bradford.
Can you give me some directions here?
If you want to-
Oh, you do it. Okay, thank you, Mr. Bradford, thank you.
Councilman Bradford, I spoke with Deputy City Attorney Julie Glass and we discussed this matter regarding Ms. Wilson. As you know, we had four essentially snow days last week, three of which closed the city of Shreveport, four of which closed the First Judicial District Court. The ordinance provides for 30 days of time delay for Ms. Wilson to file an appeal to the First Judicial District Court.
Okay.
That time delay begins to run from her receipt and confirmation of a green card, return receipt requested from a certified mailing. That's dated February 10th of 2015. So, essentially, without snow days or without inclement weather, withstanding their 28 days in February, she would theoretically have until 12th of March, 30 days, to file an appeal with the First Judicial District Court. Pursuant to revised Statute 1:55, because there's inclement weather and the court was closed, there are to tack on four additional days which would take her out to March 16th.
Okay.
So, she is technically within the appeal timeline to file her appeal.
Okay.
In order for you, or if you were to pose a motion to reconsider and it were to carry, then that would effectively stretch out that appeal process timeline again, okay? It would start a 30-day process again. So, at this point, the city is not in a position to impede or stop any transaction that she may have, so she can either make her transaction occur today. I think you hinted to me earlier that it may occur soon.
Yes.
And if that does not occur, she has until the 16th of March to file her appeal.
Okay.
So, she still has time to make, to take action.
So, thank you, thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Farah, can I speak to you? Yes, the attorney is still available for this. Understanding what the city attorney just made us aware of, in the transfer of property that takes place, where is the new owner and where does his timeframe starts?
The order attaches, the order that has been filed in First JDC attaches to that, has attached to that property, so it still continues.
It continues?
Yes, sir.
Within your owner?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so he would have to then, let me, go to court and ask for what?
He has to go to court and ask for a stay.
Ask for a stay.
Mm-hmm, ask for an injunction for us to prevent us from demolishing the structure.
Okay. What I'm, again, this is, this is, this is, the gentlemen are here and I'm having them speak to us. I don't, it doesn't seem to me that he should have to be burdened going to court if we can handle it here. Attorney, I'm trying to handle it here so that they could go ahead and make their transaction unimpeded and that, and that the court, the process of going to court would be eliminated. What's the scenario when that happens?
Well, this impedes our process of moving forward with demolition of a substandard structure that's been sitting like this for the past 2002, 1994 years. The property, we want the property demolished. It is substandard. The owner can file an appeal to First JDC and let the judge determine that, or he can do so if the property is conveyed. Unless that happens, I'm against filing. I'm against recontinuing, because I'm against the process being impeded the way we're doing it. I would prefer, if anything is going to happen, it should be, it should be appeal in First JDC.
Let me tell you what I'm against.
Okay.
I'm against these type of situations lingering for 10 years, okay? I'm against the fact that this has not been addressed. It falls into a situation where there was some negligence going on for whatever reason. This lady, this property owner, has an opportunity to sell her property. I'm not against, I'm against tearing down properties that has the opportunity to be rehabbed. I think, I think we, I think we need to be careful. If there's opportunities for properties to be, to be rehabilitated, I think we ought to give every opportunity for that to happen. Now, I understand and I support property standards, and if there wasn't this opportunity for this property to change hands and the commitment and the-
I'm going to have to call a point of order, Mr. Chairman, because there's debate going on and there's not a motion on the floor.
Mr. Chairman. Well, we don't have a motion on the floor. If you could make a motion real quick, then this would be in-
Chairman, I'm trying to, I'm trying to ascertain a motion. I'm saying that I was trying to avoid-
I think the motion that we're looking for is just a motion to add it to the agenda today. So, if you could make a motion to add it to the agenda today and we get a second, then we'll, then we'll be in-
I'll say more, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that.
Okay, great. We've got a motion by Councilman Bradford, second by Councilman Flurry to add to the agenda today, and I believe the floor is still Councilman Bradford.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, also remember that-
You gotta ask if, if there's anybody for or against it.
What's that?
Anybody in the audience has a chance to speak for or against-
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Yeah, so we do have to add the opportunity when we're speaking of this, to offer the opportunity for anybody for adding this today to speak now. Is there anybody for adding this to the agenda today? Is there anybody against adding this to the agenda today? Okay. So, that, seeing none, now we can go to discussion, or do we need to? Yeah, we can go, we're in discussion, so, and the floor is Councilman Bradford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that. And I'm just trying to get a clear understanding of how we can allow these two residents to transact, or transfer a property without creating a burden on them. I, I work from this, I work from this perspective. Whenever, when I see goodwill intentions, I won't, I would, I would like to know how we can make it happen versus how we can't make it happen. And if you are opposing to giving them opportunity to transfer, I don't believe this gentleman is going to invest in this property. He told me 10 minutes ago that he's prepared today, after we make it, make it, make the provisions to make it happen, to write Ms. Wilson a check today, and that he would assume the property and that he would immediately start working on the property to get it, to get it refurbished so that he can rent it out. Now, I don't, I don't see how, that's a big, big problem, I just don't see it. So, okay.
May I say this?
Yes, sir.
So, you understand where I'm coming from.
Okay.
We've been citing this property since 2002.
I understand that.
And with being an absent owner, the only thing that has ever happened is actually after we cite, then it's abated.
I understand that.
Now, but we've gotten complaints from the police department-
I understand that.
And from neighbors.
I understand that.
This property has been sitting and nothing has been done.
I understand that.
So, and because of complaints from elderly people that are living there, we have written, there are four houses in that area that we have actually written up on that, that we are trying to demolish. And I understand that the gentleman has a paper that says he's going to purchase the property. And in my mind, that does not convey to me what he's going to do. There is nothing that, that says about timelines, there is nothing that give us anything as to what he's going to do. He just said, "I'm going to rehab it." Many times before, people come with good intentions and they fail. The property then, we're going to continue as far as going ahead and demolishing it. So, I'm not in favor of it. Of course, it's your decision to make, but I just want you to know that three months from now, the property will probably be still in the same condition and then we're still going to have a problem.
You're talking to two different people.
I think it's unfair to the other, I think it's unfair to the other neighbors also.
How could you assume that? You don't know that this gentleman is assuming something that you, it's a whole different ownership.
That's correct.
I mean, what happened with Ms. Wilson may be what you are saying is true, but you can't, you can't, you can't just arbitrarily believe that this gentleman is going to operate under the same, under the same standard.
That's correct.
At this point, Mr. Bradford, I'm sorry, we do have a couple other requests to speak, so, so if we can get to the next one and keep them in order. I've got Councilman Corbin followed by Councilwoman Lynch and Mayor Tyler in the speaker queue right now.
Ms. Farnell, what is the, or do you remember what the date is that we voted to demolish the property? When we voted, the council voted to uphold and demolish the property, when was that?
January the 26th.
So, this council did that?
Yes, sir.
My concern is, over the past four years, I can remember numerous situations where simply because a property changed hands, it just, the case starts over, drags out, and it continues to be a nuisance to the neighborhood. I would be a little curious to know if the gentlemen who are interested in buying this house have had any other property standards violations, houses that they have, or houses that they're working with. But I think there's a process in place. I support the process in place and I'm not in favor of making a change, especially since the new potential owners have an opportunity to go to court themselves.
Point of order here, just questions. So, we're not discussing the merits, we're discussing the merits of adding it to the agenda.
Adding it to the agenda.
Okay.
Correct.
Very well. And if we don't have a unanimous support of adding it to the agenda, it's moot, then it gets added to the agenda in two weeks' time if there is interest, right?
Correct. We need unanimous support to add it to the agenda today. Very well. Councilwoman Lynch.
Call for a question on the motion on the floor.
Okay.
My only, since the mayor-
I would second your motion on this. Calling for the question. But I would certainly want to give her the opportunity-
But I relinquish to her, I'm just going to ask a question. And I will yield to her, I'll yield to her.
Oh, we will. Okay, so the motion on the floor is to add this to the agenda, and that is what we have been, we're calling the vote to add this to the agenda today. And that being said, it will be added and we'll take it up again for further discussion and deliberation at, under, under the Property Standards Appeals section. All in favor of adding it to the agenda today? Got two in favor, there's no more?
We locked out, Mr. Chairman.
No, that's what we were asking for, a hand vote.
A hand vote, oh.
For a hand vote. One, two, three, four, five, and then all opposed, so that is not added to the agenda today. Motion fails.
Okay, so what we are now, attorney, is that they can move forward-
Yes, sir, there's-
With the sale of the property.
There's no impediment to, to sell the property as it stands right now. It's just that, point of order, the motion just doesn't carry, but she's still, again, within delays until the 16th to take some action with the property.
Okay. When we get to that on the gentleman's-
Take some action or file an appeal.
I'll have, I'll have the parties to speak.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Not on the agenda.
Not on today's agenda.
No, it's on the harbor standards.
What, the-
This case.
No.
No, not, not today, because it didn't, it didn't-
That's what we're saying.
It didn't get added. The motion to add it failed.
Oh, okay, all right, well-
That's what, the whole issue was whether we should add it to the agenda.
I understand, but I'm, I'm assuming that, when I saw it on the agenda, that it was there, but I understand, trust me, I understand.
Okay.
Okay. So, Ms. Wilson, you and Mr. Ave can do, can, you can sell the property and he would assume the timeframe that we're under, okay? All right, thank you, thank you very much. Chairman, mine, my computer's not, is not working.
Mine is as well, and I'm sorry, it looks like we are maybe having some technical difficulties. B is usually the one that, that runs them and clears the votes, and she's not here with us, so we're trying to figure it out as soon as we can, so, please, let's bear with a little technical glitches through today's meeting, and we appreciate everybody's patience with that. Let's see, Mr. Thompson, is there, there are no other items?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And Mayor Tyler, did you have any additional comments or?
No, sir, I'm trying to get out of it.
Okay, that's okay. Like I say, technical glitches aside, we'll get there.
I'm running the system here.
So, let's see, we don't have any requests to speak at this point under public comments, and tomorrow we do have one executive appointment to consider for confirmation, and that is Edwin Scott Wolverton for Fire Chief. Under consent agenda, do we have items under consent agenda for tomorrow?
We have several resolutions, Mr. Chairman, and if there are no objections, we will read all of the resolutions at one time, and there'll be one motion to adopt the consent agenda, which will be to adopt all of those resolutions.
So, as opposed to, and let's just go over this one more time, because again, this is consent agenda is a relatively new tool for us to be using here. So, just so that we all remember, when Art reads these tomorrow, if you have a question about a particular resolution that you'd like to remove from the consent agenda, it only takes one person to ask for it to be removed, it doesn't have to be voted on, because the consent agenda is assumed to be that all of those things will be unanimous. So, if anybody wants an item removed, you know, you're welcome to let us know today or tomorrow, but tomorrow, if you just make the motion to remove it at the end, after they've all been read. So, we're going to read the entire consent agenda, and then if you want to remove a particular resolution, the time to do that is after we've read the full titles.
Okay.
Okay. Do we want to read, are we ready, Jim? I'm sorry, my script is also, I think tomorrow's script, so I'm balancing back and forth.
Consent agenda legislation for tomorrow to introduce resolution, routine ordinances and resolutions, there are no resolutions, there are no ordinances. To adopt ordinances and resolution, Resolution 22 declaring certain city property be surplus property authorizing the downtown, the donation of the property to the James Burton Foundation. If you remember, this is the 300 seats donated from SPAR, from municipal auditorium. Resolution 30 authorizing the acceptance of a donation from the Rotary Club of Shreveport. This is the umbrellas that'll be going down on the riverfront. Resolution 31 adopting the system survey and compliance questionnaire required by the Legislative Auditor's Office of the State of Louisiana. Resolution 33 rejects the bids received on IFB 14063 Hattie Perry Park Community Center renovations.
These were not very close.
No, they were not, and so that project, just as a bit of information for everybody, that particular project, the bids came in a lot higher than what was hoped for, so the architect went back and we did have a community meeting with the citizens in the area around Hattie Perry Park to go over proposed renovations to get the budget in line, and I have to hand it to the architect, he was able to really cut a lot of costs without cutting a lot of amenities. So, they're still going to get the same kind of product and the project doesn't have to change too much in what it will provide the citizens, but it will be shaped a little differently in a way that saves us a lot of money, so we'll be going back out to bid on that.
Makes me question why we couldn't do that in the first place.
Right, you know, when you have a 35% difference between the bid and the-
Yes.
Exactly.
There's submission.
Poses some challenges.
Why couldn't we do that in the first place?
Wonder why. Resolution 34 authorizing Thomas H. Scott III at Lot 1 Sportsville subdivision to connect to the water and sewer system of the city of Shreveport. Resolution 35 authorizing the institution of expropriation proceedings against certain described properties within the city of Shreveport in connection with a Wallace Force main project parcel T-20.
I'm going to interrupt here, trying to get a signal out.
That's all right.
Okay, so, there's a, there's a snapshot of the parcel itself, but could we have a map at least before tomorrow of kind of a little bit bigger picture of where that actually is relative to?
Robert, would you like to take a look at it?
Yeah, if you've got it here, it's just the one that I have is-
Okay.
Still blown up, I'm not even sure where it is.
Okay. We can bring it tomorrow.
Okay, I mean, you sent it to me in emails, just the one we have is only of the whatever-
Sure.
Little sliver of land close in. And, and I guess I just, just so I'm clear and I've read the thing, so we've offered these people, and maybe you need to come up here, Robert, before I finish with this, but, so we offered them $2,700 bucks or whatever it was, they refused.
They're, we've offered them the-
Did they counter or anything, and I know we can only offer up to the-
The appraised amount is what we've offered, and they're requesting significantly more. Robert can address that.
Yes, Councilman, they were looking for $41,000.
Forty-one, for that amount of-
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I don't need to ask anymore.
Robert, in the map we have, everything that has hash marks over it is all in the city and what does not-
In the Wallace main, I think in the actual plant, right?
That is correct. It shows, well, what it shows is it shows sewer servitude existing out there, and then it shows the temporary servitude that we want to acquire adjacent to the existing servitude.
I would like to see, just so I could get some visibility on how marketable this property is, it doesn't appear to be particularly marketable in and of itself, but-
Well, if you look at that map, Councilman, you will note that there's a SWF code servitude on that existing same piece of property, so whether or not it's marketable, SWF code would have to release their servitude.
Councilwoman Lynch is next in the queue.
I'd like to have this one removed from consent.
All right. And that's fine to let us know today, I mean, you don't have to make the motion until tomorrow, I mean, but, you know, we can, we can make a note of it today so that we'll be prepared for that tomorrow.
She wants it removed?
From consent.
From consent for tomorrow.
Ms. Lynch, I could not hear what you said at all, Doug.
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on that one?
Resolution 36 declares the city's interest in certain adjudicated properties a surplus. Resolution 37 suspends certain provisions of Chapter 106 and Chapter 10 relative to alcoholic beverages on March the 28th, 2015 concerning the dispensment, sale, and/or consumption of alcoholic beverages at 1251 Dazzell Street, the Great Raft Brewing hosted by Louisiana Health Science Center's Medical School, Executive Council for the Heart of Gold 5K Race benefiting the Love for Lisa Foundation for Sanovial Sacrom-
Sarcoma.
Sacroma, sorry, sarcoma research. Mr. Chairman, just a clarification, on Resolution 35, the fact sheet says that is in Council District D, which it originally was, but that is now Council District E.
Make sure we can keep up, some of these district lines shift a little bit and it's hard to keep up on them. Okay.
Regular agenda legislation, resolutions on-
Regular agenda, let's proceed. Thank you.
Resolutions on second reading and final passage are which will require only one reading. Resolution 24 supporting the efforts of the Brotherhood of Locomotive Engineers and Trainsmen to require crews with a minimum of two people on railroad freight trains
Okay.
Resolution 28 suspending the efforts of certain provisions of Chapter 10 and Chapter 106 of the city of Shreveport's Code of Ordinances on Saturday, April the 18th, 2015, Saturday, May the 23rd, 2015, Saturday, August the 8th, 2015, Saturday, September the 19th, 2015, Saturday, September the 26th, 2015, Sunday, September the 27th, 2015, and Tuesday, November the 3rd, 2015, in connection with fundraising efforts by Shreveport Moose Lodge. Resolution 32 authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the second amended and restated Medicaid Supplemental Cooperative Endeavor Agreement with Louisiana Ambulance Alliance and other public entities. Administration is going to ask that this resolution be tabled tomorrow.
And is there, is that just a matter of some timing, additional information?
It is a request from the deputy city attorney based on some information that's going to be released from the state later that will allow us to adopt it in whole rather than to piecemeal a kind of what we're doing here.
Okay.
Resolution 38 requests the opinion from the city, I'm sorry, from the Attorney General of the State of Louisiana concerning whether the city attorney can represent the mayor and the city council when a conflict of interest exists between the mayor and the council.
Okay.
The introduction of resul-
Well, the Moose Lodge- Well, the Moose Lodge legislation, Ms. Glass prepared amendment number one, and she did not hear back whether or not that was okay, so if you got a chance, would you look at that, and if that's not, then we need to know if we need another amendment.
What does that amendment do?
The amendment said, there was discussion last time about what if there are problems out there with some of these events, so the amendment would say that in the event there is any person on the premises is charged with violations of the Code of Ordinances, especially the alcohol ordinance, but anything else like noise, then the resolution would become null and void. And I didn't actually mean to say no one responded, I got several responses, but I didn't get any responses that said they wished to do it the other way, which would have been to do each event with a separate resolution.
And just, if for some reason there's a motion tomorrow to do only the first two dates as an amendment, we could probably do that real time, i.e., it wouldn't be any.
Well, the amendment has to be in writing, so we would have to write it up, so I could prepare that, or, you know, sometimes I can do it off the cuff if somebody decides during the meeting to do it a certain way, but if anybody's thinking of wanting to do it that way, I could go ahead and prepare it.
And this is your last?
Yeah.
All right, and so, any other questions on anything under, under those resolutions? If not, then can we proceed to introduction of resolutions?
Introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to March the 24th, 2015. Resolution 39 authorizing the employment of legal counsel to represent the Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board in the City of Shreveport. Resolution 40.
Quick question, is the only change because their company name is different now, is that the issue?
I believe we're at the end of that contract, it's the same, it's the same attorney moving to a different firm, but it's the end of the contract.
It's the end of the contract, that's the reason for it?
No, it's, it's, it's because the name of the firm has changed, so we need to re-execute the contract.
Okay, resolution.
Resolution 40 authorizing the mayor to execute a Medicaid supplemental payment cooperative endeavor agreement with Louisiana Ambulance Alliance. We'll ask for this to be tabled as well, as with our resident.
I was thinking that we should probably let it be introduced and moved to second reading, and then table it.
Okay.
So, we got to table 32, and not this one.
So, we'll move forward with this one, and then table it at our, at the following meeting?
Yes.
Okay, and now, on to 41.
Resolution 41 ratifying the acceptance of a monetary donation to the Shreveport Police Department for the purpose of purchasing civil disturbance equipment, helmets, and shields. This is from the North Shreveport Business Association, I believe, some $14,000, they do good work for us.
What are helmets and shields needed there?
I think it's one of the chief's, or. I believe it's riot-type gear that they're just needing to have.
Yeah, and North Shreveport Business Association actually is going to give them the money to get it, so that.
Great.
I know there's been a big issue about demilitarizing police departments, is this kind of I'm asking about the swords and the shields.
Swords? No.
AK-47s, and I know there's been some discussion at the national level about the demilitarization of police policing.
Yes.
Is this feeding into that, or is this something totally different?
No, what we have there is, we have antiquated equipment, we had shields and helmets, when people throw rocks and balls and whatnot, that's something we have now, it's over 30 years old. We only have a certain set, or a certain amount of them, I think we only have 30 or so, excuse me. We only have 30 or so, so we just need that equipment, just in case. And it's at no cost for the city, North Shreveport Business Association is going to donate the money for us to purchase those bodies.
And let me ask, is the, are the officers, is this a special unit of people, or is this just part of the whole training?
We're going to train all of our officers in civil disturbance training, which is needed, and therefore, you know, we'll act appropriately during those times if needed, but mostly, it will be given to the CLOs, who are the first line of defense that will use our community officers in any kind of civil disturbance, they'll have the equipment in their cars with them.
Okay, can, do y'all have a picture of what this is going to look like?
It, it's, it's just a shield and a helmet.
Well, now, I mean, I just.
I know, but I don't have a picture for you.
We can provide that, Jim.
But you're not going to have tanks and stuff?
No, it's not a tank.
I know that, I'm just, I'm just saying, I mean, you know, we've seen a lot of things happening around this issue, I just want to, I just want to know what we're getting into.
Right, and we don't anticipate any of those things happening here, but if they do, we want to be properly trained and have the proper equipment to deal with anything that might occur, we don't anticipate any of it, but everything else, we need to be trained, and we need to have the right mindset going into it, and the proper equipment.
So, okay, that's what I want to be sure of.
And I think also, probably a distinction might be that this equipment is protective and defensive in nature, not aggressive, and, you know, it's not, it's not anything projectile.
Well, it's purely protective for the officer.
For the officers, so. Well, the, North Shreveport Business Association has been good to the police department.
They really have over the years, and as far back as when I started, they didn't give police officers bullet-resistant vests when I got here. That was done some years later, but it came through what they call Agers Business District, which is now North Shreveport, so they started many, many years ago.
Certainly appreciate their support of, of our police department, them and some of their member businesses have been very good over the years.
Absolutely.
They really have, yes.
Chairman, let me ask you, Chief, and you said, basically, this is a replacement and upgrade of what's currently.
It is.
How many, how many different, how many units are you?
We're going to have 60 sets, 60 helmets and 60 shields for a department over 500 people, so.
I mean, it would be utilized as needed, I guess.
As needed, yes, like I said, the CLOs will be our first line of defense, 30 of those will be assigned to the CLOs, the community officers.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, while I'm, while I'm having the floor, let me, let me just express to, to the chief, as well as North Shreveport Business Association, for that wonderful awards banquet last week, I thought it was very, very honorable on, on the way it proceeded, and those gentlemen and ladies of the force who received those honors, that was well-deserving, I saw the energy and the reception of that, so that was good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your continuous good efforts.
Councilman Brad, it is, it's humbling to see that, those guys do a thankless job, and they do it very well, and most of the time, you only see when we do wrong, not all the times that we do good, we do more good than we ever do wrong, but you never hear about that, and so, we on our own, and very appreciated that you came.
Yeah, we enjoyed it, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and I think we're on to Resolution 42 now.
Resolution 42 enters into a contractual agreement between the City of Shreveport and AlSCO relative to providing water and sewer coverage.
And this is.
National Linen Service.
Yeah, this is with a company formerly known as National Linen Service, and it's a economic development, sort of a continuation of an economic development incentive that was provided to them, and I think we have a question from Councilwoman Lynch.
Now, is this something, this is the first time I'm seeing one of these, is this something we do for a lot of businesses, or just for, because this is actually in my district's business?
It's not tremendously common, it happens from time to time, I mean, but we don't see them often, but.
We, we don't see these often, as we don't have a lot of businesses that are, that come in that are heavy water users, most of those are out at the port, and we do those reduced rates for some businesses out of the port, outside of the city limits, out of the port. This is one that was done about 10 years ago, on the books, we probably have, that are different rates than what we currently have, maybe three or four, so it's not something we do often, but it's, we base it on the number of jobs that they provide, whether that business is growing, you know, what they've done for the community, you know, what they're bringing in with regards to, if it's a new business, that infrastructure improvement, the capital improvements, plus the jobs, and so, we felt this is, this has been a very good relationship for us, they've been a great paying customer over the past 10 years, and they've grown their business recently, they've expanded into Texas, they're actually bringing in some of that work in from Texas, and I have Lane Adger with AlSCO is here, if anyone has some questions of him as well, but we, this is how, we view this as an economic development opportunity to keep a good business here, so they can grow.
Certainly seems to have been a successful tactic in allowing them to grow, and, you know, seeing that they're bringing in, always like when I see Texas dollars coming over to Louisiana, it didn't happen as often as I'd like to see, so, that's good, and certainly appreciated, does anybody have any direct questions?
I wanted to ask about the number of jobs, particularly the number of jobs, I'm kind of scrolling through this quickly, is Mr. Al, who did you say was here from AlSCO?
I believe they currently have about 80 positions out at the facility.
What's been happening the last 10 years, thank you, you all keep that area up very nice, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Tell me what's going on with the number of employees you all have, and over the last 10 years?
We've, we've actually taken, we've actually taken on some business.
Okay.
Over in the Dallas area, and we send a 18-wheeler load of linen over there five days a week, and AlSCO is in the process of an acquisition of a large Texas linen company, and we anticipate our growth to increase.
The actual number of people employed there, are you all running, it's not 24 hours, is it?
No, ma'am, we only run, it's kind of a modified shift, we're open about 15 hours a day.
Okay, okay.
I can't find the rates in there if you're looking for them.
Oh, okay.
They're not in there, so that might be helpful for us, to at least send us what the rates are and what they're.
We'll be glad to do that.
Please, because I'm scrolling, but I'm not finding it.
Absolutely.
Okay, and, and I have a question about the number of years, Mayor, Mr. Crawford, I know the original was 10, and this one is for another eight, nine?
This will be for 10 total, they'll start this year, 2015, and run through 2024, so it's 10 full years.
Is there a rhyme or reason to the number of years?
It's something that we, we don't, we like to periodically make sure that we can make adjustments if we need to in contracts, you also, you don't want it to be too short, that the company can't plan and have a good budgeting tool, but you don't want it too long to where if they become a problematic situation, say they aren't employing the people that they employed, that, you know, we have a chance to adjust those rates in the future.
Is there something in this contract, that if they sold the company or became something else, that we would have an opportunity to renegotiate, or would the new company just assume this contract with these reduced rates? Is there something in here to that effect?
I don't believe that there is, usually, a contract is with a certain company, but I can have legal take a look at that, and see if that's something that needs to be added. I believe that there is a termination clause in the contract.
Okay.
Councilwoman, the contract would be specifically with this business, they're going to add 5% over what they've been paying to the current year, which would be 2015, with a 5% increase for every subsequent year through the longevity of the contract in '24.
So, will you be able to tell me exactly what the difference is, like how much of a break this represents?
Yes, I can get that, I can send that to Council.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
I tried it on my computer this morning, I was like, am I supposed to use the 2005 rate?
Oh, yeah, no.
It's just, the things that are in there are the different rates that were adopted over the years, but there's no AlSCO's rate here.
Yeah.
But you're going to get that too.
Yes, ma'am, we'll be sure and get it done.
Great, and, okay, so those are the resolutions that are up for introduction tomorrow, and now on to introduction of ordinances.
Introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to March 24, 2015, is Ordinance 20 amending the 2015 Airport Enterprise Fund Budget, this is going to provide funding in the amount of $62,000 for police department, our police security, the airport protective vest, and to also repair a roof, this will just move some money from their operating reserves into line items where they can take care of those issues.
Okay, and Ordnance is on second reading and final passage.
Numbers are assigned, ordinance numbers, Ordinance 16 is zoning C-215, amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the City of Shreveport zoning ordinance by rezoning property located on the east side of Viking Drive approximately 760 feet north of East Olive, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, B and the same is hereby changed from R-1H, Urban One Family Residential District, to B-1 Buffer Business District with site plan approval, and to provide respect thereto. Ordinance 17 is zoning C-1115, amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the City of Shreveport zoning ordinance is by rezoning property located on the south side of Bert Coon's Industrial Loop, 1,580 feet east of Kingston Road, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, B and the same is hereby changed from B-2E Neighborhood Business Extended Use District to B-3 Community Business District with site plan approval. Ordnance 18 zoning C-1315, amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the City of Shreveport zoning ordinance by rezoning property located on the south side of Mount Zion Road, 1,225 feet west of Lynnwood Avenue, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, B and the same is hereby changed from B-2E Neighborhood Business Extended Use District to I-1 Light Industry, Industry District with site plan approval. Ordnance 19 zoning C-1515, amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the City of Shreveport zoning ordinance by rezoning property located on the north side of Southern Trace Parkway, 775 feet east of Wallace Lake Road, extending north of Southern Trace Parkway, 1,700 feet, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, B and the same is hereby changed from R-A Residence Agriculture District to R-1D, PUD Urban One Family Residential Plan Urban Development District with preliminary site plan approval.
Are there any questions about these, and I did notice, by the way, that typically these will say the council district that they fall in, just noted on them, and I thought I saw that on the agenda that came out to us via email, but I've not seen it on this one today, sometimes that's a helpful reference point for everybody, but are there any questions about these, anyone? Okay.
I had one, one, they had a negative vote, and maybe Mark can explain a little bit about what the person objected, and I can't remember which one it is, so hold on, I'm going to get that answer.
I think it's number 18.
Number 18? Is it, and I don't remember, is it in?
We're having problems with the voting buttons, and sometimes my commissioners will hit the wrong button, I think that's what it was, but let me just check that.
Well, it said, somebody, when I read it over the weekend, now, I may have this right, but I think there's even, somebody appealed, or spoke against it, if I'm on one, yes, it does say one person spoke in opposition, and the board voted eight to one.
Eight to one, yes, I do recall, I believe, on this one, I had one commissioner, but he didn't really extensively express his reasons for it, I think other than the fact that, perhaps the fact that he had to provide the hard surface parking, I believe was the issue, is the only thing he had, but he didn't like, but he voted against it, but the rest of them did.
But this, this guy's trying to just put in a, is he putting in the building, or is he putting in the warehouse for his irrigation system?
On this one, it's, it shows that it is a revised site plan for the design and fabrication and repair of ATVs and UTV equipment, so, with the expansion that I'm showing here, it says that that includes two existing buildings, it's 1,200 square foot office and a 4,000 square foot mechanical tool shed, and it will entail a 3,200 square foot mechanic tool shed and 800 square foot house for irrigation business, and those two areas are divided by an existing wall.
Okay, so, I mean, I'm a little bit out of my lingo, so ATV is not the kind of, it's not a, I'll call it, an all-terrain vehicle, or is that some kind of technical term that's related to landscape? Or is that some kind of technical term that's related to landscape irrigation?
No, it is an all-terrain vehicle. You're correct. ATV is exactly what it's is what you're thinking it is, exactly what it is. And then the UTV is utility vehicle.
Okay. But the so now we've got a existing use that's an irrigation company that I'm assuming is fairly quiet, and now they're going to change it to a, I'll call it motorcycle, some type of motorcycle engine deal next to a, and this is a next to a residential, right?
Yes.
I mean, listen, if everybody's that doesn't bother anybody, it might.
You know, under this situation, because adjacent to that property is it is zoned I one as well, that's one of the reasons why this area is not considered spot zoning. It's a continuation of the existing zoning that's to the to the east of it.
But isn't it to the right residential?
Yes. R one D.
I'm not sure whose district this is in.
This is in Councilman Flurry's district.
Flurry's?
Yes.
So the portion that's have I seen this right as there's a there's a buffer between like it's a it's this portion?
There is. I'm sorry.
There's still a buffer between?
Yeah, there still is a buffer there. I stand corrected on that, yes.
And it's it's not like a subdivision neighborhood. Looking at it on Google Earth, it's a very, for lack of a better word, rural country setting.
Okay. I mean, I don't want to cause it looks like there's a thick barrier of trees between the two as well. Excellent. I'm not trying to create anything. I just wanted to make sure that there when you see somebody object to something that seems reasonable. Seems reasonable, and then there's no discussion on it.
Well, the objection was not to what you're talking about. It was because we were requiring them to provide hard surface parking or that that was where the objection came from, not from the perspective of what you have just described in terms of this.
Okay. Copy that.
All right.
Okay. And I had Councilman Flurry.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I had no one call to complain about this.
Okay. Good to go. All right. Any other questions on these? That's all I had. And so, let's see. Do we have any tabled legislation that we'll be considering tomorrow? I believe so. All right, so we are on to Property Standards Appeals. Ms. Farnell, out of the room.
Let me step down for just a minute. Somebody there.
Mr. Chairman, while we're in on Ms. Farnell, can I have a point of information?
Sure.
Chairman, previously, Council Lady Lynch called me out of order for engaging in a department head while I was ascertaining information regarding a decision that I was trying to make. My information question is, and I've seen frequently where council members would engage in department heads in the administration regarding information without a motion being on the floor. My question is, according to the charter, do not council members have the prerogative to engage in conversations with department heads to ascertain information without a motion being on the floor?
I think the difference today, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the difference in this situation was that it was an agenda item to be added today for voting today, and so that means that it hadn't been advertised twenty-four hours in advance notice. If we'd done that, we wouldn't have had to do that whole, is there anyone here to speak for, anyone to speak against? So it was a bit of an unusual situation, but I think that's the answer.
Can you think the attorney could have responded to that?
Well, it's not a charter issue. It's a rules of procedure.
Okay.
And basically, the city council has a set of rules, and anything not covered by the city council rules is covered by Robert's Rules of Order. And I think basically both sets of rules say that discussion should not take place until there is a motion on the floor. So in other words, so that people know that the subject matter being discussed is. There are other points on the agenda. Well, I don't know that it would fit under awards and recognition of distinguished guests. I will say, I think the council has been somewhat informal about it as far as calling people up at the beginning of the meeting, but technically, that is the rule that there should be a motion.
Let me ask you this. Technically, Mr. Sweeney was up here. The chief was up here. There was not a motion on the floor. Tell me, tell me the difference in that in those two scenarios.
That's a good point.
Those items were on the agenda.
There was not a motion, Mr. Chairman.
But those items were already on the agenda. The point of the work session is to discuss the items on the agenda. And and that that other item at the beginning of the meeting was not on today's agenda, but it was offered to be added to today's agenda. So that's the difference, because the other things were already published on the agenda.
Let me just say this. I'm for all decency and order. Okay? I mean, I think we've experienced where, you know, eight o'clock's and seven-thirty's because of just just rattling along, okay? But my point is simply that as an elected body, an elected member of this body, who should have the prerogative and the ability to ascertain whatever information that needs to be ascertain from a department head or from administration, should not be restricted. Now, I hear what you're saying, but I'm just saying, and we're going to address consistency in how we conduct our meetings, consistency in how we conduct our meetings. I'm for order. I'm for discipline. I'm for decency, and I'm for order. But I don't want to be impeded or violated in my ability to obtain information that is vital to my ability to make to make decisions. So I just want to put that on record.
Certainly. Well, thank you very much, and I think that I think that we ended up handling it pretty well, because I think it was somewhat unusual to be adding something on a work session day. So I think it worked out, you know, pretty well. Sorry for the interruption that we had to make in order to get it on board, but I think that that just by making the motion, that was what we needed there. So we'll work to correct these as we come to them when there are new situations like that.
Be consistent, Mr. Chairman.
Indeed, indeed. We are. And so, okay, we are at Property Standards Appeals, and I'm sorry, I have two requests to speak, and in an effort to be consistent, I'll allow them the, you know, correct time on this maybe during the the committee of the whole is when we would typically have discussions related to, you know, procedural matters. But let's stick with it right now. Councilman Flurry, follow by Councilwoman Lynch?
I'll wait.
Okay.
To appropriate time.
Okay. All right. In that case, we are at Property Standards Appeals, and let's take it away.
Good afternoon. Our first case is twelve twenty North Huron Avenue. Just correct it. This is in your area. The owner is present. In our last meeting of October the twenty-seventh, she had until the end, she had ninety days to a hundred and twenty days to begin on the rehab and reconstruction of the property. We were to she was to have her plans, get it approved by the fire marshal, and she's here today with her plans. She is waiting for the approval of the fire marshal. She does have those with her, and I'll let her speak to you on that behalf.
Thank you.
To the council, I have the plans here that we have submitted to the fire marshal, and we're just waiting for those plans to be approved by the fire marshal, and then we can begin the renovation.
Thank you. Ms. Flurry, that is that do that meet the requirement that we gave her?
Yes, the plans and waiting for the approval of it. It does. We we would like to still keep the case open, continue to monitor. Now that we know that this is being done and we're waiting for the fire marshal, again, I would like for the owner to continue to keep in touch with Property Standards, because we will be monitoring it, letting us know when the plans are approved so that we can monitor. And at this time, based on that, I would be willing to extend this for a hundred and twenty days.
Chairman, move that we extend this.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Councilman Bradford, seconded by Councilwoman Lynch, to extend the deadline a hundred and twenty days. Everybody in favor? Could you?
You can vote.
Oh, okay, we got it. It's working?
Nope.
Not up. On our panels.
End of.
End of. Everybody in favor? And it looks like we that passes unanimously.
Ms. Patterson, we wish you well and be establishing your business leadership.
Yes, I'd like to extend that to Ms. Patterson.
I'd like to extend that to Ms. Patterson.
I like the picture. It looks good.
At some point, you know, you just can't. Thank you. Okay, so now I guess we're at PSD one four zero zero one five one?
Yes, that is going to be two seventy-seven West Seven Forest in Councilwoman Lynch's area. The property is incomplete compliance. He has rehabilitated the structure. It is occupied. It is occupied.
Want me to scroll? We've got water in the lines today.
This was taken when the house was when it was raining today. So we're closing the house, and we would ask that you would confirm that, please.
So moved.
Second.
To close this case.
So we've got a motion from Councilwoman Lynch, seconded by Councilman Bowman. Did I hear that? And that passes unanimously. Congratulations. Thanks for getting that done. Looks good.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Was he involved in the other deals?
Our second third case is sixty-one forty-three Rightway Boulevard. The owner is present. As you can see, this house has been renovated. The owner is present. The house has been renovated, and we would ask that it be closed.
Make that motion.
Second. That is a motion from Councilwoman Lynch, seconded by Councilman Jenkins, to close. And it looks like we need, okay, that's all votes are in, and that passes unanimously.
Thank you. Is it?
Our next case is twenty-four thirty-three.
Thank you, sir.
Willie Mays. It is in Councilman Bradford's area. That structure has been demolished.
Structure has been demolished?
Yes.
Motion to close the case.
Yes, we would ask that you would consider-
I wrote about that other day. It was really nice to see it going.
Okay, and we've got a motion from Councilman Bradford, seconded by Councilman Jenkins, to close the case. And all votes are in, and that passes unanimously.
Twenty-eight oh six West Maple. This structure was cited on January the fifteenth of two thousand and fourteen. Mr. Sweatt has there's been no permit that have been issued on this. His time has expired, and he wanted to pull a permit on this house back in April the seventeenth. There was only four days to rehab it at that time, and so he has filed an appeal. That was back in March the twenty-seventh of fourteen. On March, on May the twenty-third of fourteen, he was here. The owner was present. He had replaced the seals. They gave him sixty days. Again, on the July the twenty-first, he was present. He had sixty days to abate the violation. And on September the twenty-second, the owner was present. The owner now has failed to comply with bringing the structure up to up to codes, as you can see. No repairs have been made since he stated that he replaced the piers and beams on the seal, which was back in April. Repairs are not visible as far as the seals and the beams, but as you can see from the exterior of this structure, he has not complied. Our recommendation is to not to have allow him to have any additional time, since this has been proceeding since January the fifteenth. The owner is present, and as as you can see, as I said, I know he said that it has the seals have been done, but looking at these pictures that we took today, there's no indications. The owner is present.
What council district is this in?
This is in Councilman Bowman's district.
Councilman Bowman's district.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bowman. This is in your area, sir.
Hey, they caught me off guard with the house repairs, and I bought the house as it is from a little place in Bossier called Investors Mortgage.
When did you buy it? When did you buy it?
Officially, I was renting from them for a long time, and they kept promising me to do it, but I officially went on a lease-to-own program with them in like two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. And then they they had promised me they were going to help with the seals and having the foundation redone. They never did. They kept putting me off and putting me off. And finally, when I got tagged by the city, I went to my own references and got people to come do it and redo the whole foundation, and I just have to get the walls. I bought all the equipment, the material. I took a packet to the to the council, people tell, I mean, to the Property Standards. I have all the boards and everything for the I just have to find a couple guys to do it, because nobody would show up after I had estimates. People would come over, ask, they wouldn't even show up. And one guy came, Ninja Remodeling, Shreveport, Louisiana. He told me he would do it, just go buy the supplies and everything to come out from like October to November, then November. He never showed up. He kept saying he was coming. So that's when I finally decided, just go ahead and just forget about him and start calling other people. But I have not had time. My dad was so ill last seven months. I haven't had time to really do any of the work or get contractors over to it. But like I said, I spent like eight hundred dollars on materials to get it done, just haven't found anybody to get it done.
Does he do you live there?
Yes, sir. I live there.
Okay.
And you've been looking for contractors for six months?
Probably since like September.
Six months? Was it six months, seven months now?
Yeah, about seven months. I had a couple guys come out and look at it, and then they said they'd give me estimates, and then when it comes time to come start, they never show up. Like one guy told me, go get the material. Give me a list of material, get all the boards, all the siding stuff. He never even showed up like a month ago. I don't know if he did one job.
But you did purchase all the material?
Yeah. I took pictures down there, showed them I purchased all the stuff, new paint, new boards for the sides. And like I say, I had the I spent three thousand dollars having the the undercarriage all redone again. I sent you so I took copies of that over there.
Can you put the picture back up?
But no work, nothing has been done, correct?
On the outside, no. But all the material for the outside, where you see all the cosmetic stuff on the outside, I have all the, do you have a picture of the stuff? I sent it from. Yeah, I have all the material for the stuff to get done, I just could not get it done.
You want to be able to do this?
I would say ninety-nine because the guy supposedly coming out, Bill's fixing it, he said he can come look at it and give me a decent estimate and, you know, stuff along for me.
What's this in? It, um, I'm not sure who has the floor at the moment. If it's number?
Being as though that, I'm sorry.
Oh, I just didn't know if you were, we didn't know if you were speaking or not.
Yeah, I was just looking at all the, the time we spent on, on this. But then though, that, that you do live there.
Yes, I do.
I mean, do, do you live there? No?
I'd like to confirm that, Councilman Bowman. Because we've been, this house, we cited this house back in January. There was no indication that anyone was living in this structure. And this is a new development for me, so I would like to be able to confirm that. If that is the case, then other actions need to be taken.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask, do you have water hookup? Electrical, everything?
Mr. Chairman, is it in order for us to postpone this case?
I would ask, I would ask that you postpone for confirmation of all of this new information, please.
Councilman Bowman, are you in agreement?
Oh, I'm, I'm in, I'm in agreement. I mean, now that I understand that he lived there, I just didn't, I didn't know that he lived there, that it was occupied. I thought it was.
And she can verify that by the time we meet again.
I can verify that, yes. I can have that verified because as I said, this is a new development. As long as we've been citing this property, there was no indication that anyone was living there. So we can come back in two weeks or in 30 days.
So, was your motion?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Chairman, I move that we give, postpone this for two, until the next hearing.
Okay, a motion by Councilwoman Bradford, seconded by Councilman Bowman to postpone this until our next work session.
That's how we.
Yeah, we do have a request to speak from Councilwoman Lynch.
Sorry.
Let me ask, and I understand we're talking about postponing for you to verify the information, but if he's living there, I guess what is, what is, what is the ultimate trying to get to?
The alternative to the structure, if he's living in the structure, then will be, it's an occupied structure. Occupied structures are cited to city court.
Oh, I see.
Yes, ma'am.
So the process would continue?
The process would continue.
All right, and my question to you, what, it looks like a lot of work needs to be done to the house. So what, and, and I understand trying to work with these contractors, you know, I just wasn't able to do this myself. This person didn't finish the job, I had to get somebody else to finish it. So how much time do you think it's gonna take for you to get everything done?
Ninety, 120 days? That's just inappropriate, no longer than 100 days. It's basically all cosmetics and just three windows and the two closets and a kitchen window and it's all kinds of mess.
No, but you have to replace all the rotted wood, you have to do everything around the house. There's roof damage, so all of that stuff has to be, all of those things have to be done. And of course, when it goes before city court, then it's gonna be the decision of the judge there as to how he renders and make a decision on the rehab of this structure.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, you look like you got a job, you work.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
My intent is, in, in these two weeks where we come back, is that he's been found somebody reputable who's gonna come and do those repairs, by the time we come back and confirm that he lived there next Friday. And by that time, we should have somebody who can start the process of working on, on this project.
So you understand that in addition to just verifying the information, that we need some, something concrete, that you have somebody that's gonna actually begin the repairs?
Right.
Are we clear on that?
Yes.
Yeah, I wanna make sure.
No, 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 I'm not clear on the fact that if it's, if it's an occupied structure, you say it comes under a different set of?
Rules.
Rules.
Yes, sir.
Now, if, if, if we come back and indeed, and I, and I have no reason to doubt the gentleman that he does live there, then, then, then there will be a different citation?
Yes, sir.
And that citation would not be under our jurisdiction?
No, sir. If, when we return and it is, and he is living there, I will ask that you would close the case and we will issue him a court citation to city court.
So, so any further work on it with him living there would not come, would not come up under our, pretty?
Correct.
Okay. Well, anyway, my, my motion stands, Chairman, I call previous question.
Okay. And I think we are waiting on Councilwoman Lynch and postpone passes unanimously. For two weeks postponed.
I have a wait. Okay, then, all right. In two weeks, they're gonna send you a message. Our next case is 832 Drexel.
It's apparently in my district.
True, true. No, it's not.
Well, I mean, that's what it says.
832 Drexel. The owner is present. He has, he has completed his plumbing, his electrical work, all the structural work has been signed off by the city inspector as of January the 20th of 15. He has to do tape, tape and float and painting of the outside and remove all the outside lumber. And I'm asking for 30 days for him to complete renovation of the structure on the outside. And this is coming out of Councilman.
To remove stuff from the outside?
This is all the equipment, lumber and stuff.
You just tested, you said, you're saying that the actual project part is done, he just needs to remove it or he needs to continue?
He, he needs to paint, float and tape on the outside, remove all of the lumber and everything of what he's been doing. Yes, sir. And he says he can have this completed in 30 days.
Okay. Make sure, we'll give him an extra two weeks and make it 45 days.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Councilman Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Bradford for a 45-day postponement. And we are waiting for Councilwoman Lynch.
Oh, voting twice, yes.
I mean, I know the weather hasn't been.
Are you actually voting?
No, I hit it, yes. Record as yes, please.
I'm sympathetic for anybody trying to paint in this weather.
Yeah, that's true. It's a little tough out there right now.
That's a yes.
So unanimous passage.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Forty-five days.
If this is all completed, he does not need to return.
That is part of my motion.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next case is in Councilman Bowman, 2837 Logan. This is a case that we, that has been, let's go to it here. This case, we have been, this case was cited in March 19th, 2010. The owners, at the, when this was first done, the owner's husband, Ms. Wilson, her husband died and of course, then it became an issue for she and her family. In the last past five years, they've been coming back and forth, first to the Property Standards Board and now to city council. No permits have been issued in all of this time. The understanding of Ms. Wilson at one time was that they were supposed to, she was trying to add an addition, as that's what the addition was there. We had explained to her that the only thing that she was to do was the existing part of the structure. Remodel the existing part. Of course, she has, she's completed the seals, the foundation, that has been done, but nothing else has been done since that time. There have been a lot of impediments to her getting it done, such as money, has been the main focus on this. And as I said, it still looks the same way. Right now, what, we've had a discussion of this and I had told her that based on these past five years of not having completed it, that I was gonna ask for us to confirm the Property Standards Board order from the beginning for demolition, that it would be left up to you to do so. But since no repairs have been made, the structure is still in the same condition as it was September the 26th and January the 26th of 15, we recommend that the property owner either give us a certain date that it will be complete and all the repairs done for us to proceed with demolition. I have explained to her, based on that order, if it is carried, that she will have 30 days to file in First Judicial District Court. She is present and would like to speak.
I'm Rosie Mack, one of the siblings of the property at 2837 Logan Street. We did have, we met on September 22nd and the mater, the repairs that were supposed to be completed were completed. The 23rd, the contractor had to have heart surgery and was asked that he did not return to work within two months. He was, we were to put in the doors and windows and, but those beams inside connected to the doors and windows needed to be repaired in order for those doors to go in because they were termite eaten and some had to be pulled out. So due to his heart surgery and the weather, we have not completed the outside, only constructing the areas inside where the beams need to be, where the windows and doors need to be completed. So because of this situation, if we could be given more time to get this completed and maybe get started on the, the outside, other than the doors and windows.
So the contractor still, where, where's the contractor now?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Where's your contractor now?
Uh, he's, he's, he's doing better, he's able to get back to work.
So how much time is it that you're saying that you need?
Well, because of the two months that he, well, two or three months that he was not able to work, we would like to ask for about three months.
What's, what, what, what are you planning on doing with this? What, what, does this, someone living there or?
Uh, one of the siblings will probably move back in it. It's our mother's house.
Can we get 60 days and see what the progress has been within 60 days from today's date?
Second.
Is that your motion?
Um, there's a motion from Councilman Bowman, seconded by Councilwoman Lynch for a 60-day postponement.
Cornell?
Yes.
This was cited in 2010?
Yes, this was cited in 2010. And as I said, the, one of the problems that has been, the, I guess the base of this entire case is the, the owners did not have the money to rehab it, but it was desire of theirs to maintain the house and keep it within the family. And so a lot of things that we requested was never done, it, it just was continually postponed. So here we are now. I do have sympathy for them, but again, this is, the way I'm looking at it now, there's, there's money that has been put into the property, but I don't know how long it's gonna take for the completion of this structure. And we will monitor it, since you all have agreed upon 60 days, to see if there is going to be any change between that time, so.
I'm not for pushing, let me make that clear, I'm not for pushing stuff off for, I mean, it's been out since 10, 2010, that's one and five years. I'm not for prolonging stuff or whatever, but since it just came to me, I'd like to see where we can go within the next 60 days from then, see what kind of progress that Ms. Wilson and her family has completed up until that time. I just, you know, I'm, I'm for beautification and, and all that, but I'm, I'm gonna be sympathetic to the timeline and go for the 60 days in there.
Okay, so the motion before us now is for a 60-day postponement, please vote. And it looks like we've got all votes in. And that passes, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Councilman.
Our last and final case is in Councilman Efferson's area. The owner is not present because we had.
She is, I saw her.
You saw her?
Oh, really? You are?
This is 728 Austin Place. And 728 Austin Place is historical structure that Ms. Bryant has been, he has been rehabbing. And there is consistent work being done on it, there's a lot of progress that has been made. The inspector continues to monitor this and she is here, so she can speak on the path of her progress.
I'm Debbie Bryant, 9640 Tammy Avenue, and I own the Gaby Weiner Mansion, the quarantine club, and we are continuing to make great progress on this structure. I'm real excited about it, I don't know if y'all drove by, but it's looking real good. We, the, the main phase one was completed several months ago, which was the structure, the foundation and the roof. When we met last time, we started on replacing the wood rot. And obviously, y'all can see there's a lot of wood rot, but we've made good progress on that. We have completed all the wood rot on the backside of the house, which had completely sunk into the ground. And so it's been covered with the black tar paper, waiting for the siding to come in. We're just trying to see exactly how much of the siding we're gonna have to have made because it needs to match the historic siding. And I don't know if y'all have a picture of the box, I call it the box, but yeah, the big square box on the right side of the house, there it is. We started working on that. Of course, the weather has not been very kind to me the last three weeks with the, so my carpenter has not been able to work for two weeks because of the weather, but we're trying to tie that in to make it look like it was part of the house. So you see the windows cutting, the other side, the windows are actually there, we're just gotta redo the shiplap and put the black tar paper back on it. And the final, that right there is the back section of the home, that's the last phase of the, of the project, which I have, went down and talked to the building permit people and they've accepted my plans. I just have to get back when we get ready to start that, to complete, complete that. So, and you see all of the, the siding's looking good up there.
It is.
So, we're excited about it.
Really happy to see the progress y'all are making. I know this is a, a big task and y'all undertook it and I'm really proud of you and would like to move for, now, I think we continue to keep it on here just for monitoring sake, so I'd like to.
I love showing it off. I love showing it off, so.
Yeah, we're, I love seeing the progress, so, but I'd like to postpone it for six months, is that, that's good?
Yeah, I'm hoping I'll have some of that back done by the six-month term.
Wonderful. All right, so a motion from the chair, seconded by Councilman Corbin for a six-month postponement. And that passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Debbie.
Ms. Chairman, just curious, what are your intentions for this? This is a beautiful structure.
We're actually gonna open a bed and breakfast there. And hopefully live there and do small weddings, receptions, and little girl tea parties and etiquette classes. I collect antique dolls, so that's what we're planning on doing.
Fantastic.
Be a good, good thing for the city.
Absolutely will. We appreciate you so much, it's looking great. Keep up the good work.
This ends the Property Standard Board appeals for today.
All right, thank you, Dorothy.
See you.
All right, now we have, do we have any alcoholic beverage ordinance appeals? Looks like we.
We, Ms. Chairman, we have one, but I believe that.
It's been withdrawn.
That should be withdrawn from, removed from the agenda.
Okay, motion to remove from the agenda? Motion by the chair, seconded by Councilman Corbin to remove from the agenda. Hand vote, all in favor? Looks like unanimous, motion passes unanimously. And now we are to, reports from officers, boards and committees? Is that where we are? Correct. And I'll just say, for those who are on the Riverfront B4 Committee, we do have a meeting tomorrow. I believe it's at 1:30 is the posted time, 1:30 tomorrow, so. And anybody else from a, from a committee? Seeing none, we are at the clerk's report.
We have none, Mr. Chairman.
Right? If there's nothing else, we made it through this, guys. Let's adjourn.
Thank you.
No, we did not, but I wouldn't. Is it under your screen? It's not under your screen. No, I'm about to use the gavel on the screen and the technology at this desk if it doesn't start working.
Get you a gavel, Mr. Chairman.
Not had one, and.
And this monitor won't.